Absent with regrets, I have councillor Hood, absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? It sure is. And approval of agenda, additions and deletions. So under 10A, we will put recoverable costs. And 10B, sidewalk. We have those in front of us. Anything else for additions, folks? Okay. Okay, second by Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. No presentations, staff reports. Okay, CAO.
Your worship, my report is attached for your information. If there are any questions from council, I'd be happy to entertain them now or at your convenience.
Okay, any questions for the CAO?
I've got a question, well maybe when Chad comes.
Okay.
It might be Chad, it might be a combination. What about Jeff? I saw him yesterday, did a nice job cleaning up the fire damage down on Main Street. Or the Don Yuster building, the, right? I don't know how much it costs, and I know over the last several years, we've done, done a few of those, put it out for tender. Do we have the equipment or the capacity, or is it easier and cheaper to pass it out to somebody else? I just wonder if there's a piece of equipment that we could use, or is it just as easy to put it out to a private contractor and let them do it?
You probably looked at it, Chad.
No, actually, no, that's, Glenn managed that project. If you're talking about a general demolition of a structure that remains, no. We don't have the equipment in-house to, to do that type of, that scale of a project. That requires an excavator, generally. Yep.
How much is an excavator, just out of curiosity?
To purchase?
Yeah.
Depends on the size, could be anywhere from 125 grand to quarter of a million. Yep.
Thanks, Chad.
So the situation that you're referring to, the, the property that was destroyed, or mostly destroyed by fire, what happened in that case, it became a situation where it was fairly clear to us that there wasn't going to be a cleanup occur anytime soon by the, by the owners. So we issued an order for it to be done. The order was not complied with, and then we go ahead and have it done in the community's interest. The, the cost of that gets applied against the property as a lien. So if the property is, is sold in the future, our lien gets paid. The, the worst-case scenario on a situation like this would be that the property owner stops paying taxes. This, this lien continues to attract interest, and eventually we're in a situation where we're, we have a property, as we've had in the past, that owes us far more in terms of taxes and liens than anybody will pay for that tax sale or a private sale, and we end up selling down the road at a, at a discount if we want to move it, or we purchase it ourselves for strategic reasons.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay. Anything else for the CAO? Fire department report, fire chief's here. Anything for, for the chief? Everything going well, chief? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Good?
When I was reading the information, I know that we're looking, the fire department is looking to improve the second floor for, for use by the staff and the volunteers. I also know, John, that this is a nice, one of the nicest ways to attract volunteers. So just as a general question, your worship and fellow councillors, I'm not sure what the bill is to make it suitable or presentable for our fire department volunteers and staff and other events. But are we helping to fund that? And, and if we're not helping to fund that, is there, could I ask for consideration from a capital fund point of view, that maybe next year we could help greatly financially?
Go ahead.
Your worship, I believe in terms of the second floor renovations, I know the engineer's working on the specifications, put that out for tender. I believe our budget and our capital budget for that is, going from memory, 175,000? And that's just for the bathrooms, okay? To make them accessible, to rebuild them, and we are entirely funding that. We are entirely funding that, the town is. The engineers made me aware that there's improvements that will need, be needed to the elevator to meet accessibility requirements. We don't have, I don't have an estimate, Charles may want to speak to that.
Specific to?
The elevator? Do you have any idea? Okay. And there's also, if the, if the volunteers intend to use the, and I believe they do, intend to use the hall for functions that would have food service, they have some equipment donated, but there will be some work required in the kitchen area in order to, to have that support service available. So the first piece is the, is the washrooms. They've been on our radar, in our budget, and Charles is working to get that work executed. The other two items, the, the elevator, as he indicated, we don't have that investigated yet. And the kitchen issue will be one that resides with the volunteers. So that's a, a piece of this that, that they take ownership of.
Okay. Thank you very much. And, and so I just know volunteers are the heart of all, all of our community, and I'm just curious as to, hopefully when we want to start that also, that, that part of the project. You know, when, you know, it's in our, it's in our budget, and is it tendered? Will it, no?
It's not tendered yet. What we found when we looked at our file kind of is that there were some gaps in the scope. There were penetrations between the first and second floor that had fire stopping that was related to the removal of those pieces of equipment. We found out recently about the elevator, and that would be an issue where occupancy is on the second floor. So we're just adding those extras in. Once we feel like we've got enough of the scope hammered out, then we can move to construction. But it's just basically trying to get a package that's going to include as much as the things that we're identifying that are preventing the occupancy on the second floor, which is a list that is larger than we initially expected.
So I appreciate all that, and I'm fine with that. I was just looking for an update, and as I said a second ago, volunteers are the heart of our community, and I want very much to, for John and his staff to attract as many volunteers as he needs, and not, and not always be a challenge. Thank you. I got one more question after Don, though.
Well, ask the question, you're good.
All right. Lockbox. You know, for, I know a long, few years, is that, is that a, I think it's a workable thing, but where would I put, if I was still on the pharmacy, where would I put my lockbox?
Normally goes to the main door of the building, where the fire alarm panel would be. So when you go to your announcator panel, if it was in, let's say on Main Street, that's where your lockbox would go.
On the outside?
On the outside, yes.
On the outside? Okay. So I noticed one response, or a couple of responses, saying that, that those people might be awkward with that. You know, having a lockbox outside, that maybe someone would like to tear apart. And, and I saw one on, on Facebook, I think, or Town of Yarmouth's Facebook page. That, is that workable in other areas?
Yes. The locks box program has been around for decades, right? In the past, they were all mechanical. These days, you can get them electrical, you can pay up to a thousand bucks if you want for a lockbox, and you can work it off your iPhone or whatever the things are called, opening and closing it. The cheapest ones I've seen is around 25, 30 bucks. There, there's a whole bunch of questions out there. As an example, in the past, lockboxes were thought to be, oh, I'll just get the key out of it by smashing it. But if you look at, you look at the whole situation, if, if I'm a thief and I'm trying to get into your building, I can smash a door that's worth, you know, 1,500, $2,000 and get into your building, or I can smash a lockbox that's worth 30 bucks and get into your building. Either way, your alarm system's going to go off. If you don't have an alarm system, obviously someone will see someone smashing it, especially if it's at the main door. So there's goods and bads about every system. The system right now we have, the, the key system, just doesn't work because the people who own the buildings that the keys belong to never update them. So you could take a key, you could get to the scene, and it probably won't work. Some of the buildings we had on the system that we, that we have right now, the old key system, don't even exist anymore. It's a volunteer system that, that we do for the public. If they want to be part of it, they can. They don't even have to have a lockbox if they don't want to, it's, it's all up to them. Usually when we get a call, as an example, if it's an alarm call, the company that calls 911 gives them the contact information for the person with the key, and they meet the guys on scene. There's a whole bunch of different ways of looking at it.
Good. Thank you very much, John.
I guess I would like to just look at a timeframe for, for the fire hall itself. And the reason why I'm saying that, the fire hall used to be very vibrant and a community setting and a place where a lot of people attended. And now it's, it seems like in, in my term so far, there should be a closing or an end date or something that I can look in the future. Are we looking at four more years? Are we looking at two years? Are we looking at a one-year thing, so that we can get it up and, and start using it for functions, using it for the fire department itself? But I think, I think it's well overdue that, that it, it's a project that needs to be brought to a halt. Is there a timeframe? That's what I'm looking for.
Sure. So as soon as we can get firm that scope, councillor, I don't see it being a problem moving to construction relatively shortly, like before the end of the year. It's mostly interior work, it's pretty much all interior work, so I'm not subject to the seasons for the construction scheduling, so you'll see an issue with it being launched before the end of the year. I'm a bit surprised myself just that there were those gaps in the scope that were really strong. It's a little bit difficult to interpret, but I think that it's just getting the time where we can sit down and actually find out what we exactly need to do for the inspections, because once the officers go through the building, if we missed anything, then we have to get someone to relocalize it and fix those. And we've already found that on the two walk-throughs that we've done through the building, there were double the amount of items added to the list on the second walk-through that were identified from the original scope for the project. So we just, and then we recently found out that there were issues with the elevator, which would affect occupancy as well. So there are a few delays. However, we do have options if we want to move to construction and take care of the washroom scope. It won't be no about some of the basics, but we can, we can do that relatively quickly. However, we might be facing a delay from relocalization in the event that the inspection identifies extra items.
Okay, that's good.
Good. You had your light on, but you don't hear good. Okay. All right. Good stuff. Thanks, chief. Okay, operations? That is Chad. Yep. Any questions for Chad? Go ahead, Jim.
Sorry, that.
No, good.
Chad already knows I'm going to just tease him a little bit. I noticed Chad on page three of your report that the Capitol Street paving, there are three items on it, which was, be the same as we used last, had last year. So two questions. The first one, just a little bit of a tease. We didn't use all of the budget that we had in a line item that we had last year. We had $115,000 left over from last year, it's resurfacing. So I understand, I understand the process, we're trying to balance budgets. So I warned you, I was going to tease you a little bit, Chad, so. But the other question, I notice we're going to do Pleasant Street from Parade to Forest. Are we going to do the intersection, I know you, on that, on that corner, Parade Street, Pleasant Street intersection? That's, that's tough.
Yeah. We probably can and should include that, unless engineering says otherwise. I know we've talked in the past couple of years about maybe reconfiguring that intersection with a roundabout or a traffic light. So as long as nothing is imminent, we, we probably will resurface that intersection as well.
And I understand, we don't want to resurface it and then do a round, plan a roundabout.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Is there enough room for a roundabout?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
To be honest, if you're going to do a building, a roundabout on the intersection, it's an incremental loss, because if you're putting, going to put in a roundabout, you're going to have to actually redo the entire pavement, reconfigure the whole thing if you need it done. So I don't see it as a huge efficiency, and I might agree with the manager of Public Works that it's probably time that you fix that.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Good. Any more questions? Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just wondering what the process is to, that something's chose, or the protocol, that something's chose to get paved or get patched? What would be the difference in the two? You know, why some areas, why not others? Just wondering how the process is that you get there to pick these specific things out?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we, we prioritize, you know, collector and arterial streets that see most of the traffic. Other than that, it's, it's, there's not that many variables. Just condition, if the condition warrants it, we'll, we'll repair it. So this year, aside from the, the three streets that we've chosen for Capitol paving, we're assessing every street. We have 80 kilometers approximately of streets to assess. So some just require some simple pothole patching, but others, depending on the severity of the failure, may require excavating and patching. So it is a bit of a balancing act, and we, we try to cover the street right from the streets, right from the south to the north end. And we're taking every, every complaint seriously. Some are more legitimate than others, but if, if you're getting complaints from your constituents, feel free to pass them on.
And just one other question, I see that there's 350,000, I guess, here? Wasn't it 450 that was approved? Is it just like a?
Yeah, I think, I think there was a surplus carried over from last year. So it's, it's a conservative list to start with, so.
Thank you.
But we are, we are, just so everybody knows, we, we have one contractor, and that contractor also does residential paving and works for the highways. So sometimes we're, we are at the mercy of their schedule. So if, if at the end of the year, we haven't spent our budget, it's not because we haven't tried.
Good. Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I just want to pile on that point for a second, is that when we, when we do our, our procurement, which we just completed, and we award our, our paving contract, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of companies doing this in the area. And once we award our contract, they have our contract. And, you know, they'll, it's, it seems to be the history that, that they get to us when they get to us. You know, they're chasing other private work, you know, they're trying to make hay while the sun shines, but they know they have ours in their pocket. And, and we tend to get late season, and it's a bit frustrating. It's a, it's a factor of not having the most competitive environment for that, for that kind of service. If it was more competitive, then they'd run a risk of, of potentially not getting our work again. That, that could come into the equation, but when we essentially get one bid on this, it's, we're kind of at their mercy.
Well, we do, we do get a, typically we get a second bid from a company that's not local, but their rates are almost double.
Yeah.
Good. Any more questions for Chad? Okay. Good. Thanks, Chad. Planning. Any questions on the planning? Go ahead, Jim.
Very happy, I know the planning department's very busy up there, and I visit them irregularly, and there's lots on the go. I just have a question of, your worship and Jeff. Regarding the letter that I saw a draft copy of, I've had a moment, just a moment, with Warden Anthony at our recent industrial commission meeting. They've received the letter, and they're going to be chatting with us. Can I ask if there's any update on that at all? This was a week ago that we had the letter, that I spoke to, to even about. About sharing the membership of the PAC. Like, I would sit on their PAC and Warden, and Deputy Warden John Cunningham would sit on our PAC.
Yeah. Your worship, the councillor asked for a copy of the letter, which I, which I provided. It went out a while ago. We haven't had a response, but I can take that up with the CAO and just find out when they're intending, intending to address it. I know they do have a council meeting tonight, so maybe it's on that agenda, I don't know.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Asset management, infrastructure renewal. Don't have anything there.
So I don't have an, an updated report for you guys, but I just have a, a list here of, of the previous report, which I have some updates on the higher priority projects. If you guys, if your worship, if that's acceptable, I'll just rattle these off.
Please.
So the ferry terminal, things are going good. We've had stakeholder meetings between CBSA, CBCL, who is the designer, and the security team, and also the operators bay ferries. And so I feel, we're feeling like everyone is understanding each other, the information flow has been, has been good. CBSA and BFL have been responsive and helpful in this process in collecting documents, whatever information they have, and turning those over to the designers. So we've, we should have a preliminary layout from some of those initial meetings.
Can you get close, get closer to them?
Apologize about that, sorry. Yes, we should have a preliminary layout as an output from those, those meetings and conversations about where the lanes are going to go, where the booths are going to go. We should have a preliminary layout that everyone can take a look at shortly. Their own, CBCL has decided to go down the path of One Direction, so they're going to produce one layout and look at it in a detailed fashion. And if it's off the mark, they'll go back to another layout that they had on the sidelines. If it looks good, they'll develop that further. So things are moving along in that direction. The Gleve Street Storage Garage, that, that, the designs for that are nearly complete as per the input from council, which we're very pleased with. We put a little bit more effort into trying to refine that design, and I feel like we're, we're happy with where it is now, and so their, CBCL is going to be completing their design. Then once we get the finalized drawings, I'll, I'll send the overview for you guys to take a look at. I know a few weeks ago, we talked about asset management and the development of that program. Recently, we, we completed one of the last sessions of the cohort group, the AIMNET, sort of provincial-wide, at what really Atlantic Canadian-wide asset management company. So we received some documents from them, some data from them. Me and the GIS technician have been going through, reviewing those data, and it's going to take a second pass from our own internal team, but things are looking good. We, we produced our own, I had Tracy in my office yesterday, and we're looking at a heat map for the wastewater system, and we're, we're calibrating it, actually looks pretty good. So we'll have that ready for you guys shortly. So the dog park, we finally got that up and running. Everybody seems happy, I know Martha's pretty pleased. And there's a few odds and ends that we're looking to take care of, and the community has been very impressive. We're very happy with the businesses, volunteers, as councillor McCall was talking about, stepping up, trying to assist us complete that project. So that's, that should be done shortly. And I wanted to give you guys an update on the Stars Road Pleasant Street intersection rebuild, and then the multi-use trail that go, that will go from Pleasant Street to Clement Sav. So that is nearly completed in design. There was a few delays, just with trying to figure out the best way to rebuild that intersection in terms of the, you know, Lotus Garden is obviously close, and we want to accommodate their, their business with the design. So we did some consulting with them, and we were actually able to get some Mandarin Asian characters on the design drawings to help facilitate discussion, so that was pretty interesting. And we're pretty happy with how that went. And so we should have completed designs for that and be able to move, start looking at construction relatively shortly, in the next few months. And in terms of that, yeah. Were there any other questions for any of the infrastructure projects from anybody?
You're busy, Charles.
Good stuff. Go ahead.
I just want to make council aware, you know, Charles has hit on just a very few of the projects he has on the go, so he's very busy. One of the things that, just on the dog park, that I want to make you aware of, is that Charles had come to me and identified that where we had hoped to maybe receive a donation on some poles, some wooden poles that would hold the netting, the protective netting, between the ball field and the dog park. That doesn't, the opportunity isn't there for that, so we're going to have to probably procure those poles and have them pay for that. So it's going to be an additional cost to the project, not insurmountable, and not significant in the big picture, but it's important that we get that done so that it's a, it's a safe place to take your dog and to enjoy some time in the sun.
Go ahead, Wade.
Still on the subject of dog park, I'm just curious. I wish I have had a chance to go down there with my own dog, but I haven't, it's just been too busy. But it's been very wet weather, and I'm wondering how the drainage situation is there? Is it, is it okay?
Yeah, it's a little, councillor Cleveland, it's a little bit rough, it's a little bit wet there. However, there, there are things that we can still do to enhance the site. So whether that's light swaling eventually that we can get between the ball field grade and the dog park area, which will relieve it a little bit. I think that with incremental kind of small efforts and, and changes to the, the area that we can enhance it, I don't think that we need to put any large, big infrastructure or anything like that in. I think it is a combination, as the weather starts to get drier, and then looking at just small things that we can do to divert bits of water here and there where the problem areas are, I think that we can enhance the site to the point where it would, it has the similar functionality to all of the other areas around it, whether it's the ball fields or what have you.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Just on that, you know, it, it has been an extremely wet spring. You know, and I think Frank will attest to this in terms of just getting on the ball fields. You know, I can remember back, back in the day, we used to try and hold the teams off until the first of May, and really the fields were, were dry enough to be worked middle of April. I assume you're on the ball fields now, Frank? But it hasn't been that long. It's, you know, the, the fields have been, have been really difficult, and those, you know, those are designed to shed water and to, and to be usable. So it's been a very wet spring, and, and, you know, that hasn't been good for a lot of things. So, you know, in this circumstance, you couldn't expect it to be a perfect situation. What we've got to aim for is serviceable under, under normal conditions, and hopefully this isn't the new normal.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
Okay, finance. Jerry?
No report. It's, business as usual, finance department. Right now, we're working with auditors and doing working papers for them. They'll be in in a couple more weeks. Basically, just a lot of paperwork to get done for them. That's what we're working on.
Okay. Any questions for Jerry? Good. Okay. Recreation. Frank's down back there. Any questions there? Yep, go ahead, Wade.
May as well, bring it up, we had the conversation before we came in. But Canada Day's coming, the weather isn't looking absolutely super for fireworks, so perhaps we can... I know, it's an absolute shock, a shock! But at any rate, let's, let's hear the plan.
Righto. So Canada Day kicks off our, our busy summer activities. So Canada Day kicks off our, our busy summer activities, and as part of the festivities for Canada Day is fireworks. And as of now, we are planning for fireworks on July first. The long-range weather report does not look the best, so that morning of July the first, we will make the call whether that we're going to try, which I'm eighty percent sure that we will send the crew from the valley down to start setting up for the show, because we know even if it's raining that morning, by ten o'clock at night, it could clear. And not only do we have to deal with rain, we have to deal with fog. So the predicament that we're in this year, just with Canada Day landing on a Monday, and most of the fireworks FX crews work regular Monday to Friday jobs, is that if we cancel on Canada Day, the, the stipulation of our funding from Canadian Heritage is that we have to shoot the fireworks as close to Canada Day as possible. So our rain date is July the second, so it would be that Tuesday. So what the predicament we're in, and we're trying to work that out, is that we may not have a crew available to shoot on a Tuesday night. So if that happens, what we have to do is we have to get approval from Canadian Heritage to move the show to a different date. And a few years ago, when we did cancel on July first, we just automatically looked at CFest as our next big gathering to shoot them, and we did that, and then Canadian Heritage kind of wrapped our knuckles and said, no, these are Canada Day fireworks, you can't move them for your own celebration. So they said, don't do it again, but they did say if we run into the similar problem, to make sure that we're notified and part of the conversation. So we've started that conversation with them, that if we don't shoot on Canada Day, we're going to do our best to shoot them on the rain date of Tuesday, July the second. If that doesn't work out, then we'll, we'll look to another event. And that's what I always think of, is the next big event is CFest, so, which is only a couple of weeks after Canada Day. So if that does happen, we'll have to call them Canada Celebration Fireworks as part of CFest.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Oh, it's never easy. The other thing I just want to say, and it's just a comment, but of course, we just went through the Participation Community Better Challenge, which went fairly well, and we did, Yarmouth did pretty well.
We, we held our own, and I guess in my twenty-some years as recreation director, and I'm sure everyone in this room has either tried a fitness routine or a diet routine, and what happens? You start off a ball of steam, we started off very well the first week or so into the challenge, and then our participation levels dropped. And one of the things that with the, our connection with Participation Canada, we don't have access to all the people that are inputting their minutes of activity. If we would have had the opportunity to reach out to someone that was participating and then not participating, and tried to encourage them to get back active, maybe it would have boosted our numbers a little bit, but I'm not exactly sure where we, we landed in the final tally, but it was somewhere between eleven and thirteen-ish in Atlantic Canada, which
Still isn't bad.
Is still a good, good effort. And Charles just mentioned the Asset Management National Program that the town's involved in, and the municipality as well, and I was involved in that, and I was just thinking about Yarmouth being on the edge of everywhere. As part of that Asset Management National Program, I did present our Let's Get Moving Yarmouth Initiative to people across Canada as part of that Asset Management Program on community engagement. So got lots of good feedback from lots of folks, and getting a few emails and sharing the information. Mahom Bay's looking at doing a similar type of, of challenge, and, yeah, it was kind of a neat, neat thing to get, get people moving. And, and now that we have the participation connection, and all those people that were active during our challenge, they have that app on their phones, when fall comes around, we could do our Yarmouth Fall Challenge. When winter comes around, we can say a, a winter outdoor challenge. We have all the tools ready, and we can, we can duplicate the challenge going further.
Your crew should be commended. I think that it was, it was very good. There was a lot of, a lot of different events going on, there was a lot of focus on it, and all in all, I was pretty pleased with it, so congratulations.
Well, we got to thank you too, and, and Y95 for keeping it out there every day on the radio too, so that's great.
Thanks.
Steve?
I'd just like to say, once again, whatever, what, or reiterate what we just said about your crew. We, I'm president of the local co-ed softball league, and you guys work with us every year. Great, Gail up there, I'll tell you, Gail's, Gail, when you pick up, when you call and Gail picks up the phone, you know something's going to get done, so just congrats to you guys up there for doing a great job. We had a kickoff tournament, as you can see on the paper here, on May thirty-first. We had eighteen out of twenty-two teams. Fields are always in great condition when we go there. And recently, this weekend that just passed, ESPN had a super series down here. We had ten teams, teams from far away as Halifax, Bridgewater, Waymouth, and everyone that comes down speaks to how great a facility that we have here. They wish they had three fields somewhere that looked like ours in their hometown, so just a pat on the back for you guys for all you do for the, the upkeep and how easy you are to work with, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Counselor Barry, and I, I got to give kudos to our CAO here. I remember when those fields were getting built, I was a summer student, and Mr. Gushu was our recreation director, and I can remember going out with him and holding transit poles, and the way those fields are graded is the reason why they're in such great shape. With all the rain that we've had, you could get torrential rain one day and continue your tournament the next day. So they're, they're graded in a certain way so that, and the surfacing that we have on there drains really well, so kudos to Mr. Gushu when those fields were being designed and built, because with all this rain, a lot of our other fields have been closed, but the complex fields have stayed open, so.
Good stuff. Anything else for Frank?
So next, next time that Charles or Chad needs some traction, always, Jeff's going to be his man.
Just so you're aware, Counselor Steve and I are part of an events committee.
Okay, I saw that in the minutes.
Yeah, just, we don't know what it looks like yet, but, but we just don't want to miss, we don't want to miss anything. So we're just going to sit down, if you want to
Yeah, let me know, for sure.
Yeah, we will. The first one's July eighth, July eighth at one o'clock, so I'll get Lindsay to send you a note, and if you want to
Awesome.
Yeah, that's established, yeah.
Great.
You know, we don't know what it looks like yet, but, yeah.
I'll help out.
Good. Thank you. Okay, and economic development. Ms. Natalie?
Good morning, your worship. My report is there, if you have any questions, and I just have a couple of things I want to, to chat about.
Okay, go ahead.
So yesterday, I attended a really good meeting with NSBI, the Western Ren, and our economic development officers in the region, and the purpose of that session was for us to kind of do a little lessons learned from a request for inquiry that we got from a potential investor in a couple of months back. And so it was really good lessons learned about being prepared to respond to requests for inquiries, and also to understand what tools are available or that NSBI uses that we could piggyback on, and what the sales cycle looks like for domestic opportunities. So domestic meaning people within Canada or within our community want to invest. So some of the lessons learned was that we need to make sure that our information is sitting and awaiting in a format that can be shared. The town is probably the most advanced in being prepared. We, I did an investment readiness checklist review, and we actually were fifty-two points out of the minimum of forty-six, so we're ahead of the curve, but it's continuous improvement. Got to get more, always to be available. And then to make sure that we have a compelling story about why you would want to invest in our region. So that's really critical for us to work as a region, especially as EDOs, because we're the front line, and then we, we work with the Western Ren and NSBI on those opportunities. So, yeah, so we're learning about some more tools, and we're all going to work together, so I'm really looking forward to that. So there is a couple of opportunities that came out of the discussion yesterday that I, I really need everyone's help for us to move forward. One is about prospecting. So prospecting is if you're in sales, is you look at your potential clients and how they align with the opportunities or, or what you might have available in your community. And NSBI, you know, have a very strategic and tactical roadmap in how they do that, and they establish that work plan at the beginning of their fiscal year. So they're working on those sectors, and they, they're, they're out there in those trade shows, and they're doing an awesome job. But at the local level, how we can provide some value to help ourselves is I would like for us to kind of think about how we would go about this. We have some really awesome events happening in our community where we are bringing people from around the world, around the country, around the province, and so specifically I'm thinking about Communities in Blooms is a huge symposium, bringing over three-hundred-and-fifty people. We have the Sarah Corning event that's happening in September, that's bringing people internationally to our community at a high level. We might have other events, sporting events, the Events Committee. We need to intentionally think about how to prospect and who needs to be a part of those events, if we're having a dinner, if we're having cocktails, if we're having a meet and greet. I would like to make sure that Economic Development, NSBI, and the Western Ren is there. It's not about the hard sale, it's about making those connections, that we can start those conversations, and then we can then sit back and say, okay, how does that person align with our compelling story? Right? So I know we've got some stuff happening in the near term, and I would like to, you know, maybe do a little bit of a discussion with Counselor Wade and, and others that are working, especially Mayor Mood, who, who is probably at more events than any of us. So that was really important about prospecting and what we can do at the local level and how we can build that, that value proposition. And so also learning about the sales cycle. So the sales cycle could be between two and five years. So that request for inquiry that I, I identified in my section three dot zero, a lot of that stuff's confidential, so I don't do a lot of detail, but that is still alive, but it's like seven other communities that are a part of that request for inquiry, right? So as, I, every thirty days, I do a review, like speak with my NSBI contact and with the Western Ren, how are we doing, any more information? So I just want you to know, those activities, sometimes they're not at my level, and sometimes I just get, hey, it's still alive, right? But we can certainly make an impact at our local level. The other thing I just wanted to say is I missed on my staff report, just a quick update about the Stars Road Development Project, getting input. The Chamber has issued the survey, and it has gone out to local property owners on the Stars Road, and so I'm just following up with the executive director of the Chamber as to when they would be able to provide a report or presentation to the committee of the whole. So I just want you to know, that's gone out. They're looking to see when they get a, a large cluster of responses and then, and then presented back to the committee of the whole. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was still happening and alive.
Good. Any questions for Natalie? Jim?
Thank you for the report. I noticed yesterday a fellow by the name of Tom Francis was here, Dr. Clock, and he, he would now have our clocks running, and the, so I went up with him partway to the, to the top. I didn't go the last few steps. Anyway, it's, and it looks like they could be, they're working, I checked again this morning, and it looks like they could be lit. I, I haven't come down, didn't come down last night to see if, if the power was on, to see if the clock faces were lit. Anyway, for the first time, Jeff, in how many years, eighteen, twenty-one? The clocks are, I mean, nineteen ninety-four or so since they've been working? I don't think they've worked for the last twenty years or more. And anyway, it's wonderful to see them working.
Yeah, that's thanks to, to Todd Muse.
Yeah, that's right, and I communicated with Todd, he was busy yesterday. Yeah, thank you.
Good. Anything else for Natalie? Thanks, Nat.
You're welcome.
Okay, Business National Housing Strategy. CAO?
I'll start this, but I'll let Natalie take it. So Natalie was in touch with me recently about a presentation that she attended, was privy to with an organization she, she works with around housing issues, and we know that, that we have housing issues, affordable housing issues in our community, and it's a, it's a challenge to, to figure out exactly, exactly what our role is, what the opportunities are, and, and how to play in that, in that issue. Natalie's suggested to me that the presentation was, was well worthwhile and might be beneficial for council, and I'll let her speak to what, what she learned from that presentation, but I, I suspect from having talked to counselors over the years about different housing issues that your, your appetite or your interest in that presentation might be reasonably high, so I'll let her speak to it, and if it's your pleasure, maybe a motion to